Welcome back, everybody. We have concluded the resolution of the motion that had lay on the table. We will return to councillor Adams, except she's not... No, all right. Further speakers on the... Further speakers, oh, sorry, councillor Adams. You've got about 30 seconds left. Did you want to use it? Further speakers on the report. Councillor Maddock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to speak to item B, which is the petition in regards to residents' concern for proposed change of use application at Kennedy Terrace Paddington. Mr. Chair, I've been working closely with residents on this issue and fully understand the concerns that they have raised, as outlined in the petition. In fact, I myself raised these concerns with the applicant. The applicant is the Catholic Archdiocese in that region, and what they're doing is consolidating some of their properties and looking at effectively what may end up being a material change of use application without actually clearly setting out what each application will look like as far as the property. To the credit, and I have to acknowledge the Archdiocese, they did undertake three public consultation sessions with residents. I attended two out of those three. I wasn't able to go to the first one. And on top of that, they had one-on-one meetings. I also provided an email address for any resident that contacted me in order to share their concerns, and as a result, they did get a substantial amount of feedback. What's happening at the moment is that the Archdiocese is consolidating all of that feedback and will take that on board as part of whatever application they may choose to proceed with on the particular properties. And as is set out in the petition, Mr. Chair, from council's perspective, we'll just have to wait and see what that actually looks like ultimately and what the Archdiocese proposes in its application moving forwards. And so I will continue to monitor this as well on behalf of residents. And as is appropriate, once the application is made, make the necessary representations on behalf of not only the residents of Kennedy Terrace but the other sites as well that are set out in the application. Thank you.
Further speakers on the report? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just flag, I'm still eating my dinner because it was only 30-minute break, and can I just apologize to the clerks? It was meant to be an hour break, and it will be in future, and there was just a misunderstanding. So that will be an hour break in future. And sorry for those, I can see a few of us are still eating to get the dinner down as well. Look, I just want to wrap up and just make comments on the debate we had before, say, the motion that came off the table, and it was brought off the table in good faith because I laid it on the table in good faith, knowing that it was premature, because we were at the time working, Varan still have been working on a housing strategy that was planning to address exactly what councillor Johnson spoke about last year and what councillor Griffiths spoke about today. We know that housing needs to address the changing in demographics and consider the impacts over the last 18 months. Dwelling sizes and types of these households are different, and we've seen a change in what people need in the community as well. We have seen there's definitely been an identified need for adaptable options for over 65 years of age, particularly older single women who do actually prefer rooming accommodation. It makes them feel safe. It makes them have neighbours that are close by, but with their own independent living situation as well. Supported living housing is another way, entry-level housing, downsizing options within suburbs, granny flex, duplexes, triplexes, and of course, as we are talking about tonight, rooming accommodation. They're all valid forms of housing that offer residents greater choice and affordable alternatives. However, I recognise, in my suburbs as well, and as we heard from councillor Griffiths and I hear from my colleagues, they do cause issues as well with residents who are not expecting that that kind of accommodation can be allowed in a low-density residential as it is at the moment. That is something that we were definitely looking at in the housing strategies and something we will continue to look at with our typologies. But the housing strategy at the moment is going to now run in parallel with, as I mentioned, the work that South East Queensland Council of Mayors are doing in conjunction with the state government, who have made it very clear that they are going to be going out to community engagement to talk to people about the types of housing that they want, what they'd like to see in the future, what they need in the future, in line with their South East Queensland Regional Plan refresh, which is due within the next two years. So we will continue to work on that. I'm sure councillor Allen has heard the debate today, and we will talk to him too. The team will talk to him as he takes over that role in what the typologies and the studies of the housing strategy are showing at this point of time, and I'm sure he'll be happy to bring it to a committee presentation in the future. But for the fact of not supporting that motion today, it was not that we don't necessarily feel like we agree with you in some of those instances as well, but it's premature for a city plan amendment which really was going to be done through a housing strategy and will be done through whether it's the housing strategy or the residential definitions and South East Queensland Regional Plan that we're seeing, and we have been told by the deputy mayor are coming within the next 12 months as well. So I thank the chamber for the debate, and I look forward to making sure that I keep councillor Allen very informed on everything we've been doing over the last 18 months, and he can take up the baton from here in that process as well. So other than that, I put the committee report to the chambers.
All those in favour with the resolution on the report, please say aye and raise your hand, so I may see it. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, the PAT report, please, the Public and Active Transport.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 3rd of August 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Chair. In June, the Shrima Council was very proud to deliver a budget with a record investment in public transport, one of the highest ever investments in active transport. We've wasted absolutely no time in getting the ball rolling on an extensive suite of projects that will make moving around Brisbane easier for everyone. Although it was short, Transport for Brisbane and Brisbane Infrastructure hit a number of milestones through the winter recess, and I'd just like to update the chamber on a few of those today. Perhaps the most visible change councils would have seen across the city has been the splashes of purple and orange, particularly around the CBD and inner city. On the 22nd of July, our new mobility operators Beaman Neuron roll out 2,000 e-scooters and 800 e-bikes throughout Brisbane's streets. This is, of course, the next phase of active transport in our city. We already know that e-scooters are loved in Brisbane, with over 4.6 million trips taken since late 2018. And early stats are indicating that people are loving the new e-scooters and e-bikes just as much. In the first few weeks of the new contracts, people hopped on e-scooters more than 66,000 times and more than 8,600 times for our e-bikes. This means, on average, each day we're seeing around 5,500 e-scooter trips and around 725 e-bike rides. This is pretty significant, considering we didn't have all 800 e-bikes on the streets from the first day, but more closer to 400, and we're taking into account the recent lockdown as well. So this is a very, very impressive figure. To put this into perspective, this is a similar weekly number to the city cycle trips, except there were 2,000 city cycles. So just to give you an idea of the amount that these new e-bikes and e-scooters have been used. Now, to complement the increased number of e-mobility devices in the city, we've also rolled out another 18 e-mobility hubs. These 18 hubs are in addition to the two that already exist in King George Square and Redcliffe Place, and in addition to another 15 hubs at UQ as part of their Mobility as a Service trial, which made it to Channel 7 News the other night, a fantastic article on the trial that TMR and the University of Queensland are undertaking at UQ. The e-scooters and e-bikes, of course, under this scheme and UQ's scheme are dockless, so we want to encourage riders to park in designated zones to reduce footpath clutter and to increase safety. The designated parking network will continue to evolve over the coming months and will include more convenient locations in the CBD, the valley and around Howt Smith Wools. I'd also like to touch on the ferry network review that's underway. Now, with several changes to the ferry network over the last 12 months and some more changes coming over the next 12 months with Howt Smith Wools terminal opening later this year, now is the perfect time to do a comprehensive review of the ferry network. The end goal is simply to make the network even better. We want more residents and visitors to choose to hop on a City Cat rather than to jump in the car. And the network review involves two rounds of community engagement open to the entire city. The first round of consultation, which focused on the community's needs and experiences using the network, closed on the 30th of July. This involved an online survey and eight in-person community sessions. We heavily advertised the first round of consultation on council's website, social media, emails, of course, to all councillors, letters to over 75,000 residents, flyers at terminals and onboard City Cats as well. I'm really glad this has paid off, because, Chair, I can tell you, we received over 2,100 survey responses. Transport for Brisbane now has the task to analyse all of this data before going out for a second round of consultation between the 30th of August and the 17th of September. And I encourage as many people as possible to have their say in the second round, and for all councillors to promote this citywide consultation with their communities. As we've always said, any change to public transport should always aim to benefit as many people as possible, and to do this, we need as much data as we can get. Finally, Chair, last week in the penultimate meeting of the Public and Active Transport Committee, we heard from the council officers about the fantastic Active School travel programme. As many councillors will be aware, AST is a three-year programme to help schools, parents and local community in encouraging a shift to active travel and reducing car journeys by walking, riding, public transport and carpooling. And as part of the programme, schools receive support from a dedicated AST officer, customised maps and materials, assembly performances, rewards and safety and skills training as well. 35 schools across the city are currently participating in the programme, with two additional schools have requested to be on hold until next year, given COVID impacts and uncertainty that's been created. All of these schools are performing very well under Active School travel, with some standout schools achieving more than 60% of students actively travelling, including Barton State School, Ithaca Creek State School, Junction Park State School, Loda State School, Shawncliff State School and St Anthony's Primary School. So a massive congratulations and a big rap for those schools to achieve that exceptional outcome. They're doing very, very well. This year, the AST programme has also started to roll out Stop, Look and Listen and Think stickers. So these are footpath vehicles that are promoting safety messages to students and situ, and I think they look incredible, and the feedback from schools has been really well received about these vehicles. We're currently recruiting schools for the AST programme in 2022, and I encourage all councillors to reach out to local schools and see how active travel might benefit them. The committee also considered a petition from three residents requesting a review into timetable accuracy. Timetable accuracy is, of course, a very important part of maintaining confidence in the public transport network, and we'll work with TransLink to monitor on-time performance and make adjustments as necessary. In considering this, the committee also spoke briefly about the changes to the network that we brought about by Brisbane Metro and heading into the launch of Metro Services, the Brisbane Bus Network is being reviewed currently by Transport for Brisbane, and we'll have more to share on that later this year. I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers, councillor Murphy? And now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Say no, the ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee, please. Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, every week, the Infrastructure Committee brings in substantive matters for discussion and to provide the opportunity for members of the committee to ask questions of officers about matters of importance in the delivery of our Better Roads and Transport Infrastructure projects. And as this is my last committee report, as the infrastructure chair, I want to commend the council officers for their diligence and commitment to delivery of a high-quality transport network in our city. And the evidence of that was the presentation that we had last week, which is in a series of presentations that we've had during the calendar year on major inner-city projects, the construction coordination programme that has been initiated, given the number of projects across the city that are being undertaken, which have the potential to impact on the network, so including Cross River Rail, Queensworth, Brisbane, the new inner-city schools, a lot of utility service upgrades, there's a number of significant private developments, there's the new performing arts venue, the Neville Bonner Bridge, the waterfront Brisbane, the Dexos Project, Brisbane Metro, South Brisbane Ferry Terminals, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, the city cycle network repurposing and the Howt Smith Ferry Terminal, so to name some of the projects which our council officers and engineers are making sure are coordinated, both with those private developers and with state government authorities, to make sure that the network continues to flow. One of the examples of that was the closure of the Riverside Expressway on the 18th of June. I'm sure all councillors recall that, the full closure of the Riverside Expressway in both directions on the night of Friday, the 18th of June, didn't reopen till 11pm on Sunday, the 20th of June, to allow for the installation of the bridge going across the Riverside Expressway for the Neville Bonner Bridge, and provided the need to make sure that there were significant detours in place to make sure the traffic movement flowed. That was all coordinated by council officers in conjunction with the transport of main roads to make sure that the road network didn't come to a grinding halt, which was a potential if they hadn't planned ahead for that particular programme. We also got, Mr. Chair, significant updates on Cross River Rail projects, and that was presented to the committee as well, so we can fully understand what is happening with Cross River Rail projects and the impacts that that's having on the road network as they take extract spoil and continue with their construction schedule. So, Mr. Chair, with that, I don't want to hold up the businesses of council any further than that, other than to say thank you to members of the committee for their participation. We always get interesting questions from members of the committee, and I look forward to serving the council in other means, by other means, next week. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on item... I... Sorry, I rise to speak on the Infrastructure Committee report, item A. And I just note that clearly council's family-friendly hours are not working. Councillors have been working since 8:30 this morning on committees, and it's heading on to 10:00 to 7:00. So certainly, the LMP's decision to move the meeting forward an hour was inadequate to enable the effective discussion of all city business and balance that with family-friendly hours. With respect to item A, I just want to briefly comment on the Cross River Rail issue. Brisbane City Council has been slow to realise the impact of Cross River Rail on the city and has been significantly deficient in seeking to get mitigation works to address the very adverse impacts for residents in my area. For example, council has failed to put in any safe crossing points on Cornwall Street near Dutton Park Station, leaving pedestrians at risk. They actually widened the road to allow the big trucks to make the turn. The road literally was not wide enough because of the island for the trucks to turn into the work site, and instead of saying to Cross River Rail, "No", they said, "Sure, we'll chop up our road so your big trucks can come through". And unfortunately, council's been very slow in dealing with the impacts of this project. And unfortunately, that's crept down to the Clapham rail yards, which are in Yorongpilly, not Maruka, as councillor McLaughlin said last time this matter came up for debate. It's really problematic. There are trucks everywhere on our local roads. Cross River Rail project team cut down, I reckon, about 20-plus trees along Fairfield Road, big mature trees, and council just gave them the go-ahead. I don't think council's doing enough here. The impact of what the state government wants to do at Yorongpilly is extraordinary. The adverse long-term impacts for local residents from the noise beyond the construction is going to be quite horrendous, and certainly there are potentially some very significant flooding issues with the loss of storage capacity in this area. So I think there are some real problems with this, and I don't think council's doing enough to push back to mitigate the impacts of this project.
Further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I find those comments from councillor Johnson in regard to family-friendly hours quite ironic, given what extended the length of the meeting today, but I'll let that stand and let others be the judge of that irony. Look, none of what councillor Johnson has said there in regard to council offices and their relationship with Cross River Rail is correct. They're working extremely hard to make sure that, as much as possible, the impacts of the Cross River Rail project are mitigated wherever we can. If councillor Johnson has a concern about the spoil being taken down to the Clapham Yard and doesn't like that the state refers to it as the Maruka Station, I suggest she take that up with her good friend and buddy, Mark Bailey, as it's the State Department that continues to refer to that location as Maruka Station. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
When I put the report, all those in favour, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay. The report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Davis?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our committee presentation last week was an update on the Better Shade Trees for Brisbane project. In Brisbane, there are approximately 454,000 trees planted along our streets, with 13,000 new street trees planted each year. Streets can be rather harsh conditions for trees, and a variety of tools are required to assist the growth of our trees to meet our shade targets. So council has been investigating more innovative ways to support our street trees thriving. In 2014, council planted Water Smart street trees along roads in Milton, Greenslopes and Bowen Hills, and these trees have been monitored since 2014 and have shown to have a greater canopy and increased lifespan. The Water Smart trees have been shown to be water-restriction compliant and drought-compatible and have since been implemented across council boulevard projects. There are two techniques being employed, using three different devices such as underground soak pits and green wells that store water at the base of the tree. Council has planted 16 trees along Sawmill Court, River Hills, utilising these techniques as a trial, where the trees are monitored using awkward check soil moisture probes that send real-time data back to council via the Internet of Things, and these trees will be monitored until 2023. Mr. Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you, I rise to speak on item A. And I think councillor Sri was correct earlier, that I will continue to both attend and watch, as I did this morning, the Parks Environment Committee, but also comment on it. And the obvious issue with what councillor Davis has just said is Milton, Greenslopes, Bowen Hills and River Hills are all LNP wards. So it is just appalling that the LMP continue to deliver these sorts of innovative solutions in their own wards and don't do so fairly across the city. You know, we know they've got form when it comes to prioritising their own areas.
Valleys.
Yeah. Councillor Adams had $6 million spent on her ward to buy back three house blocks with some palm trees on them, and it's just disappointing that yet again, we see a project that is being delivered for the sole benefit of LNP councillors, and we're not seeing this necessarily rolled out into other areas. So councillor Davis, through you, Mr. Chairman, you're on notice. I am watching what is going on, and I will absolutely be contributing here in the chamber. And councillor Sri was absolutely spot on. It could have been done in the committee, and it would have been a lot easier for everybody.
Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Davis? When I put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee, please. Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Toomey. The report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to mention, we had a committee presentation about council's Waste Smart Kindy programme, a very popular programme, and we also had two petitions to the committee.
Further speakers? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak in regards to item A, the Waste Smart Kindy Programme. Our Shrima Council administration is focused on keeping our city clean, green and sustainable, and the Waste Smart Kindy Programme is working hard to teach our youngest residents how to make sustainable choices and look after our planet. The programme celebrates its third birthday in September, and I'm lucky to have two accredited Kindys in my ward, at Chembury Heights and at Ginderley. In undertaking the programme, each Kindy makes a significant commitment to achieve accreditation, including encouraging their educators to participate in a 20-hour professional development course, adopting sustainable practices throughout their centre, and of course, educating the children. I'm just going to stop for one sec. Sorry. I've seen firsthand the impact of this programme that it can have on young minds, with my own son, Jack, who attends Centenary Christian Kindy, which was accredited last year. A day wouldn't go by without Jack throwing a wrapper, a banana skin or a yoghurt tub in my face to ask, "Which bin does this go in? Waste, recycling or compost?". If we have kids asking these questions at the age of four with this programme, we are playing our part in creating environmentally conscious residents of the future. Good habits start small. Last week, Avenue's Early Childcare at Ginderley became a Waste Smart Kindy, and I had the pleasure of presenting the educators with their banner and certificates, and the children, of course, with their loot of treasures, including books and paper-making equipment. This Kindy was already focused on sustainable practices, with seven resident chickens, all with very sophisticated names, including Linda, two worm farms and a compost bin. In discussions with the educators, it was actually the waste audit that helped them identify key areas where they could make the biggest improvements. One highlight has been that the Kindy now provides all of their unused food to Oz Harvest, which was a huge achievement. I want to say congratulations to the staff of Centenary Christian Kindy and Avenue's Early Childcare for being two of the first eight Waste Smart Kindys in our city. I would also like to acknowledge Michelle and Catherine from our waste department for working so closely with our Kindys to make this accreditation possible. Finally, I would also like to encourage any early childhood educators to consider participating in this programme, as these small steps create good habits for the young residents of our city.
Excuse me, sorry, that was me. Councillor Marks? Any further speakers? Councillor Marks?
No, I just thank you, councillor Hutton, for that wonderful presentation and speech on such an awesome programme. She's absolutely right, councillor Hutton, you're absolutely right in everything that you said, and I do encourage all councillors to get in touch with me if you are interested in learning how to get your Kindys involved. Thank you.
Now, put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Hutton. The report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 3rd of August 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Howard?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to briefly discuss our presentation, which was on the Cube Effect. Simon Alexander gave us a great overview of this wonderful programme. It was launched in 2015, and the Cube Effect has provided professional pathways for emerging musicians, and it demonstrates council's support of the industry and contributes to retaining creative talent within Brisbane. The programme provides participants with live performance and professional development opportunities and orig- an original music video clip and exposure to industry networks. I'm pleased to inform the committee and the council chamber that 165 young emerging Brisbane musicians have directly benefited from the programme since it began. The Cube Effect has provided an amazing platform for emerging musicians to break into the industry, with several former Cubies featuring in the 2021 Queensland Music Awards, including Psycho, who won Song of the Year, and the pop category along with Hope Dee, who won the rock category. More recently, a selection of the Cube Effect 2021 artists performed at South Bank as part of the 2032 Olympic Games announcement, and seven of the Cube alumni will feature in this year's Street Serenades programme as part of Brisbane Festival 2021. On that note, can I just say how heartwarming it was to see four of our very own Cube Effect alumni representing our city as we announced to the world our successful Olympic split at South Bank. Our city and, in fact, the whole world was enlivened by the captivating performance of Zanaback, Trippster, O'Bailey and KiFi to ring in our successful Olympic announcement. It's always wonderful to hear about the successes of our Cube Effect artists and the impact this event has on the lives and careers of all of those involved. For my fellow committee members and event organisers, we encourage you all to consider using our wonderful Cube Effect alumni in putting together any events or festivals within your wards. And the skills and performances of these artists are second to none. So applications for the Cube Effect for 2022 open on the 16th of August, and I would really urge all of you to encourage any budding artists in your ward to get involved. And on that note, councillor, Mr Chair, I'll leave debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Howard?
Through you, Mr Chair. I would just like to thank councillor Cook for her contribution to the committee in the past. And I look forward, councillor Griffiths, to having you join the best committee. We know that councillor Cummings loves coming to our committee. We even have chocolate Tim Tams. So absolutely looking forward to being able to have you contribute to what I think is one of the best committees that we have in council. And on that note, thank you, councillor Wines.
And now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand, the ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 3rd of August, 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang, the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 3rd of August, 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before turning to the report, I did want to take the opportunity as the last opportunity for me to present the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee Report. I did want to thank all the officers in the Organisational Services and City Governance divisions who've assisted me in the last two and a quarter years in the Royal's Chair. The, it's a wide, complex portfolio with a lot of moving parts, and the support that I've received from officers has been first rate. And the thanks go from the divisional manager level right down to the frontline teams, who all do a terrific job in supporting the engine room of council, which is in effect the Finance Administration and Small Business portfolio. And in particular, I will call out a bit of a favourite. I'd love to thank the Corporate Finance team who've assisted me in the last three budgets. It's always a challenge and they've always risen to it. So thank you very much to all those officers. I'd also like to reiterate my comments from this morning in committee and thank all the committee members for their support and input over the last couple of years. Now, moving on to the committee report, we had one of our regular reports, net borrowings, investments and funding. And in particular, this talks about some of the economic artworks, both globally, domestically and locally. And I will just draw out quickly some of the highlights. So quickly, global growth is projected to be 6% in 2021 and fall to 4.4% next year. The advanced economies are doing relatively well in terms of growth and less well for the emerging markets, which is no surprise. Global growth prospects are highly dependent on the vaccine rollout. That's the case here in Australia and Queensland as well. The Australian GDP is actually now ahead of pre-pandemic levels. So in sectors, we've bounced back very strongly, but we're all aware that there are some sectors that are still suffering. The RBA expects that the Australian economy will grow by 4.75% in 2021 and 3.5% next year, 2022. In the context of the domestic economy, unemployment has fallen to 4.9% in June 2021, and that's the lowest unemployment rate that we've had since December 2010. The job participation rate is also high at around 66.3%. So there are certainly indicators that would suggest that, from an economic perspective, things are starting to come back, but obviously we need to remain vigilant about major shocks and long lockdowns and what have you. Queensland's unemployment rate in June was quite good. It was 5%, 5.1% in June with 5.4% in May. So there's been a reduction in unemployment in Queensland. And not surprisingly, Queensland's seen the strongest gain in employment across the states. Now, in addition to that particular report, we had a regular report on bank and investments, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just briefly, on the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee Report, I note that this is the death of small business as a committee. It has been reduced from being an important part of council's portfolio responsibilities to being a dot point within the deputy mayor's new committee, Economic Development and the Olympics. So I just sort of note that despite what this administration says about...
Councillor Johnston, can I just ask you to talk to the substance in the report? There was an opportunity to make comments on the names of committees earlier this evening, which many of us took an opportunity to do. But can I just ask you, just to talk about the substance of the report? You've been going for about 45 seconds, and so I've been, I've just tried, I should come back, please.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you for drawing my attention to the fact I've been speaking for 45 seconds. I am just noting that this is the last time that this committee, which includes the word small business, will actually sit. And that unfortunately, the small business function has been reduced to a dot point in another committee now. And I don't necessarily think that's the best approach. So I just thought I'd mention it.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen? And now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand, thank you. And those against, please say no and raise your hand, the ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have a petition in relation to a request for a speed limit on Kitchener Road, Ascot, between Lancaster Road and McGill Avenue, and the installation of a pedestrian crossing outside a community kindergarten at Kitchener Road.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm tabling a petition on behalf of residents calling for an upgrade to the community car park at Dunlop Park, Corinda. This is in addition to the e-petition that's been tabled as well.
Any other petitions? I see no hands. May I please have a resolution to receive them? Councillor Hutton, maybe?
My apologies, Chair. I don't have that.
Okay, what, do you just have to move?
Yeah. That the petitions as presented in this meeting be accepted.
Received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
My apologies, Chair. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. We move by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Strunk, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no, the ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an, as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? There being none, councillors, I will take a brief moment now to offer my thanks to all councillors for my time as Chair of this council. It's always been a blessing to be a councillor here, and it's been a great honour to be the Chair of what I think is the greatest local government institution in the southern hemisphere, and it's been wonderful. Can I thank in particular the council officers who have provided a tremendous level of support, both the ones who are with me tonight and the ones who help me through the week and who also help on other evenings? I can also offer my thanks to councillor Toomey, who's been a wonderful support as the deputy as well. And one final mention.
Why are you thinking about it? That seems wrong.
No, no, no. For one final thing, the gavel and block tonight have been a gift of the Dorrington Men's Shed, who have crafted this with their skills, and it has been a gift to the city and a gift to me. And I'd like to thank them for providing us with the honour of their skills to make this gavel and block. And I'd like to thank all of you for my time here as Chair of this council.
Yeah. Well done.
Are there any matters of general business? There being none, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.